Do we get a...
All right.
We'll be thirty seconds. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All righty. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda for today?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I will second that.
Call for a vote.
Tippit, aye.
Semen, aye.
Vols, aye.
We have an agenda.
All right.
Barbara, I'm gonna make you sit there for four minutes.
For four minutes?
Four minutes?
All right.
Uh... How about the approved minutes? Did you gentlemen have a chance to look at them?
I read them over again this morning.
Okay.
And I looked at the meetings late last, or the minutes late last, light on minutes this time. Only had the one sat.
Yeah.
Yeah, only one. And I brought a copy to, for your signature, so I can take it to the bank for that bank card.
Okay.
And I would, uh... I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
All right, call for a vote.
Tippit, aye.
Semen, aye.
Vols, aye.
Minutes are passed. Uh... How about Haley, I'm gonna jump down to number seven, discuss and approve public health credit card limit. What's the story?
Oh, I'm not sure. I didn't talk to her, so I'm assuming maybe she's coming in for that.
Uh, she, didn't she give us, uh, yeah, she sent us an email, she wants to raise the limit from twenty-five, or two thousand to seven.
To seven thousand? Is it just temporary, or...
I don't recall what that...
Why don't we table that, well, we'll read the email sent for right now.
Yeah, right, but she did, that was the gist of it, she wanted to increase this.
I don't think I got that email, so...
Okay.
But if you wanted to do, well, Linda's not able to...
How about number nine? That should be a fast one, 'cause we know everything about that. That's the water line. That works for seventeen thousand and change. And then they'll have a little bit of, uh, extra couple thousand for hooking the plumbing up for where the line comes in, 'cause they can't technically bid that until they know where the water line comes in at the pit.
So, one step at a time?
Yeah.
So, you're talking about the Shminkie equipment quote for seventeen thousand?
Correct. So, I don't think we need to talk about it much, we know what the problem is and how to solve it, so...
It's not gonna get better on its own.
No.
I make a motion to approve the, uh, the quote for the service center water line.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, and I'll call for a vote on that.
Tippit, aye.
Semen, aye.
Vols, aye.
All right, Barb?
I would like to settle Andy's hearing for Destructible Inc. For Tuesday, June tenth, at nine fifteen.
Can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion to set the land use hearing, uh, for Destructible Inc. June tenth, at nine fifteen.
I'll second.
Call for a vote.
Tippit, aye.
Semen, aye.
Vols, aye.
Thanks, Barb.
You're welcome.
All right, let's get it, please.
I have a couple of questions on the claims.
Yep.
Um, and this is made more or less just because I... Twelve thousand one hundred and fifty-five to Tyler Technologies for IT log monitoring?
Um, so...
Is that once a year that that is?
I think that particular one is, it's called Tyler Technologies, they do like, um... As, they're constantly, what do you call it? Watching our systems access and, on top of what we normally have, they're kind of like another... You wanna call it?
Big brother.
Kinda, yeah. It's behind the scenes, but they will email and say, "Hey, we noticed this, this," and we have to respond to them.
Okay.
So, it's an extra security that we do every year.
And that's, this, so this is an annual?
Yes.
Thing that we get?
It's in addition, it's through that company, but it's not our financial software or any of that.
Okay. Well, then, what is Amazon Capital Services, 'cause we got a lot of money.
That's, they charge us directly, instead of like departments using the credit cards, they'll invoice us directly, and then we can pay through our vendor, through your claims, but we always have to pay Amazon Capital Services. So, if you see those invoices, they're really long and numbers.
Uh-huh.
How it, so... We have it set up with business account, but only so many have access to that because they'll direct invoice us.
We've got the IT hardware from CDW Government Inc.
Yep, that's another vendor Ben uses.
Yeah, we had like seven of them, of those people.
Yeah, and the last question I had was Virginia Gay Hospital, um... There was, uh... A whole lot of invoices that came. Where is that at? I highlighted it, I thought. Sheriff Inmate Acute Care. I mean, ten thousand and ten thousand, well, that's the same...
It's the same vendor, but it's, it's for pay, uh, inmates at the jail.
What, do we have measles outbreak, or what happened?
No, they have to come and visit the patient, or the inmates.
Well, we, there's an in-house program, and then if there's something that they say, the jail will call the, the doctor and everything with the in-house jail folks, and they'll say, "Take that person to the hospital."
Wherever they gotta go.
Yep.
But there's two charges for the same amount, ten thousand one hundred and thirty-six dollars and seven cents.
I saw that. It does not seem right. Looked like a duplicate. Was, were the nu, uh, was that the one the numbers were even the same on?
No.
No, it's got a different invoice number. Advanced Correctional, both May thirteenth.
We had... Five, I have five different entities for the May thirteenth. I have different amounts. I have a seven hundred eleven dollars and ninety cents, sixty-two dollars forty-six, one thousand eighty-seven thirty-three, two thousand four thirty-two seventy-eight.
You're on, I'm on page six.
Can I give you the...
Let me look at that.
Cable number?
Hold on.
Here, here, but these numbers are different. These numbers...
Oh, that's a big, I was looking under Virginia Gay still.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, no. He, go to him.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm mixing my stuff.
Two different vendors.
I'll bet that's a month later.
I mean, it's like ten thousand dollars, it's gotta be something where they just wait and bill us at one time, I'm like, oh. But that's not a...
I just lost connection too. You're passing the level where you're on your computer, you know?
I downloaded it to my computer so I could look at it.
That's why I was looking at the report. Going up to individual invoices. Okay, one was for June twenty-fifth onsite medical services per contract. That was one of the invoices. See what the other one says. The other one was May, so they were two months paid at once. So, it must be a monthly contract amount, but we paid them both in this one.
Wow, that's a lot.
Didn't we take quotes for that, that one time? It wasn't three years ago or so?
Yeah.
We did look into it.
They were by far the cheapest.
For real?
It's, uh... There's just not a lot of people who wanna get into healthcare in a facility like that.
Do we have to down?
It looks like we just renewed the contract in May.
Yep.
Okay, and then central, I would detention, is that for them?
Yes, we got current, kinda.
Okay.
We had, I had a phone call from Mr. Reed because, um, the juvenile was, needed to go back in, and so with, with all those outstanding ones, we were making them hold.
Right, yes.
Yes, so Ray told me to go ahead and pay them.
Okay.
So...
That's why, yeah, okay.
Yep.
All right, that's the only questions I had, though.
Yep, and then...
I have one on a vehicle, but then I got my memory jogged, and I know what that was. It was the Norway, or the New Hall batch.
Oh, okay.
Oh.
Do you have my papers?
Yep, you want it back, except on the other one?
Yeah, I only got a couple.
Oh, that's fine.
Yeah. Uh, one of them was, uh, conservation, life insurance agreement.
So, it's probably a payroll vendor one. If, if those employees chose to have extra taken out of their paycheck, then it...
But it's from Three Rivers Insurance.
It's for conservation?
What it says.
Hold on.
You should've just kept this.
I should've. It's out, print goes out, but let me pull up their invoice.
What, nine hundred and fifty dollars?
Must they have to have more on their staff?
Yeah, but why wouldn't the sheriff have more on them?
Because this is a different vendor, so not everybody has to go.
What did we get?
Um, it's like their group disability insurance renewal, conservation.
Would we get a better rate if everybody went with the same one?
So, I'm assuming this is in addition to the ones that the ISAC group was. And it looks like it's a yearly one we do. I'm going back through the history. So, this is an additional policy that Conservation has.
Okay.
Per year, so it's nine hundred and fifty for a year.
Sorry, keep it for now. And then, uh, debt services, that's for the radio tower, our yearly payment for the money we borrowed?
Yes, to, uh, it's a weird vendor.
Bonk?
Yeah, bonk, yeah, because it's actually comes out electronic.
That's what I was guessing.
Yep.
And then, uh, I see you're gonna put this remaining, uh...
Great.
Radio tower payment into the ARPA funds?
Yep.
There's enough in there?
Yes, for that different amount.
Yeah, cool. Okay.
It's the maintenance one that we'll be paying out again.
Right. Okay, I have no more questions on that, so can I get a motion to approve the claims?
I will make a motion to approve the claims.
I'll second that motion.
Uh, call for a vote.
Tippit, aye.
Semen, aye.
Vols, aye.
All right, last but not least, we'll hit the ARPA claims.
That one was the...
Only one.
Final one to the Raycom.
Yep.
Oh, do we wanna talk about the letter first and then approve that, or...
Probably wouldn't hurt. We could combine them together. Did you happen to see the letter? First of all, here's the bill. They nearly had that sent to her directly, right?
Yeah, I think they copied you and me on that one.
It's a nice amount, isn't it?
We knew it was coming, 'cause I've actually been holding on it for a few months.
Well, we were waiting for them to get it all.
Yep. Now, does any Raycom send you the actual final draft of the letter?
I'm looking.
Is that one that you have to sign off on?
Because all they got is the draft.
Um, May eighth, it was attached to the final acceptance.
See, that's all I got, I got three different contracts.
Because I thought... You were supposed to get it that day, right?
Yep.
And I didn't get it, I only got this last invoice, the remittance information. So, no...
Could we make a motion to give them the approval to sign it for when he does reach it?
Well, I'll tell you what.
Because you had them change some things in it.
Yes, I did, oh, look, these guys, the only difference is, these are the three things down here, moving on the back, that is not done yet.
Oh, okay.
Okay? And then what I had them do, you can, let me, I wanted this extra line in here. This, the original one that they sent me that was saying that they acknowledged that, uh, these three things ain't done yet.
Okay, that's on this one?
I want, yeah, but I wanted this one in here saying, "Okay, we acknowledge that, but we're gonna have it done..."
By July first.
They're gonna get us the list of all the equipment, serial numbers, and...
Okay, that's the only thing, so I wanted some cheese in that.
Okay.
Saying that they won't finish up with that.
By July one.
There's, there's one piece of equipment that is here that will be installed in their update process that they're working through, and that's included in there.
That was a secondary road stuff.
Well, they had the one piece that got lost in translation, they had to do the order.
Okay.
On this one here, there's got some more, this was the revised one that you wanted in,
Yeah.
but then some of this is not in here.
Okay. He did shorten it up.
Yeah. But the numbers are the same in here as they are in there.
Yeah, they do shorten it up.
They shorten it up, okay.
Like I said, the biggest thing is I wanted the cheese and everything in that. Here they just say that, you know, "We understand there's three things that ain't done yet, and the punch list will be completed by four, seven, and twenty-five." Well, that's already passed.
We're already done with that, right? So, what if, uh, what if seven one comes and they're not done?
We still got our...
Maintenance degree.
Maintenance degree.
Oh, okay.
We can withhold, we'll fill that in time.
Okay. Well, yeah, as long as we got something in the back, that's good.
Because you said they weren't in acceptance of quarterly yet, right, for that?
They thought they'd be able to do it.
Yeah, he was gonna get it back to me, and he hasn't said one way or another. He hasn't got that. But, because I, I didn't, all I got is draft on all these, what he sent me, so technically I can't really sign them.
The draft, right? That's probably for you, if you had any last minute changes.
Right. And he never did send me another one, unless he just did it.
Did we have Ray look at that too, probably?
No, we didn't.
But you, I mean...
Wouldn't hurt.
Yeah. Everybody busy watching, I can tell you that. All right, getting back to it, uh, we still gotta pay it regardless. And we don't have nothing to sign yet, but, so we'll just pay the bill.
Just, yeah, if you initial that invoice, that'd be fine.
Yeah. My invoice, or you got one in here?
Nope, that one in there, that's the original.
Okay, you got it, yep, yep, got it. All right, so can I get a motion to approve paying the Raycom final payment? You can say the number if you need it, if everyone's making a motion.
I'll make, I'll make the motion to approve our last milestone final acceptance payment on the radio tower project, the complete project, to Raycom for seven hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars and nine cents, and authorize the board chair to sign the contract, once we have one that does not say draft on it.
I'll second that motion.
Call for a vote.
Tippit, aye.
Semen, aye.
Vols, aye.
When you're at it. Down to Bruce. Whoops, I didn't get the other one. Ah, we got it now.
So, that did our ARPA claims and...
Yep, I'll just combine it.
Both of them?
Yep.
Okay.
And the acceptance letter.
Okay. Come back to that, I haven't read the email all of it again.
You've read number ten with Melinda.
Yeah, treasures. This is for the school?
Yep, that they have, all of them have to go to the Iowa DOT training on July seventeenth, so she's notifying you that they're gonna be, their office is closed that day.
Yeah, 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 you got a different one here then. Okay. So, we're just acknowledging that she's gonna have the department shut down her office on the seventeenth of July. She's good at that, she posts it, she's in the mail, or, no, newspapers and everything.
Put it online.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
So, if anybody goes to see, if they can come in that day, it'll say, "Office closed for training," so...
Right. But she, I mean, she's good at that, she, she's done that last two years, I think. Closed it down for a day.
Okay.
That's no problem. So, now, the next thing is, uh, what I was talking about, the tax abatement from Alpine School.
Oh, yeah, yep, that's a whole new resolution.
So, I don't know if you guys know much about it.
Is that for their house?
Yes.
Yes, so we found out a little more, Tracy come in and talked with Larry, and then I called the superintendent, but he, when he was told, when he called in in the fall, that that should've been abated, because the prior value from the prior parcel, he was told would be abated.
That's only eighty bucks.
Oh, okay.
And I, he didn't know who he talked to, that he was just told that, so, otherwise, we were kind of leaning towards making him pay it, but...
Yeah.
So, we're just abating eighty dollars is all we're looking at?
And all we're looking at.
Because it's based on the prior year, when they purchased that ground.
Okay, so then I...
It had prior value there.
Because, oh...
Before the house was built.
Yeah. And the taxes on the built house doesn't, doesn't kick in for another year anyway, right?
Yeah, so we won't abate those.
Yeah, that's... What is this, should I make a motion?
Go right ahead.
I'd like to make a motion, uh, to accept resolution twenty-five dash thirty-three, abating the taxes of eighty dollars for partial number zero, zero three zero dash one five four one zero.
Okay.
I guess I should've signed it all in.
You second it?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, call for a vote.
Tippit, aye.
Semen, aye.
Vols, aye.
There you go.
Is that a copy?
Yeah, uh... This one I don't know about, you'll have to help me on this, Haley, discuss and approve FY twenty-five suspended tax lift.
So, that's what we do every year, um, we verify with Department of Human Services that those individuals still qualify for their, um, suspended tax lift. So, what that means is, once, once something were to come up, or if they're to sell, or the status changes, then those suspended taxes will become due again. So, these people, we can't list their names, but we certify that list to the, back to the DHS, and then the treasurer can put them on that list for suspending their taxes. So, it's kind of one of those things we do yearly, but like I said, we go back and forth, and double check that they still qualify before I certify. And I have that letter from DHS if you want to. Comes back to us, it shows...
They confirmed all of it.
Yeah. Yeah. We had to drop a couple off.
Let's see that.
That's why we double check.
The list dropped to about half.
It does usually fluctuate within a couple.
Okay.
That's the average.
Can I get a motion?
I would make the motion, uh... To suspend the taxes, uh, for the eligible people, uh, as verified by Health and Human Services.
And authorize Tracy to sign the letter?
Authorize Tracy to sign the letter. I'll second that motion.
Okay. Call for a vote.
Tippit, aye.
Semen, aye.
Vols, aye.
I'll give you that back, I'll give you my letter too.
Okay.
It's got their names, it's got their names on it.
Hey, oh, the credit card limit, Ruth, did you happen to look it up?
I have no argument.
I haven't got that far, so give it a few minutes, I'll read the... Okay, I read it. Basically, she wants it raised for right now for two, two seventy-five hundred. Is that how you got it, Ruth?
Yep, from two thousand to seventy-five hundred.
Or just a temporary?
Um, that's what it sounds like here.
Because again, I'll have to have that. Because, again, I'll have to have that, I'm writing for the bank.
A few days to make these purchases.
These are these kits for school buses.
So, do it for like a month window or something? So that the bank knows to bring it back down?
Yeah. So, we get the money back, is that correct?
It's probably grant funded, maybe.
Yeah, so we, we outlay it and then we get it back.
She would give her, she said she's gonna use it right away, but I'm just, I'll only need it for a few days to make this purchase.
You want to put a timeline on it, a date?
Maybe that would be better, instead of, uh, saying thirty days or forty-five days or something.
Yeah, set a date, I mean, that way the bank knows too, because she'll require just the minutes.
How about...
But if she needs it ASAP, we're gonna have to...
Yeah, you're gonna have to make a special one.
I'm gonna have to, otherwise, if next week, when you sign the approved minutes, that's usually what I give them.
She's not gonna be here today, they're gone at a conference.
But I would think if I still print them out and sign them or some, something that they have in writing.
Okay.
Think if we give it two weeks.
Fifteenth, I was thinking somewhere like the fifteenth of June. Today's, uh...
Thirteen.
Thirteen, so give her till the fifteenth of June.
Okay.
That, that would be the timeline anyway, and then at seventy-five hundred is what she's asking for.
And then after that, go back down.
So, I need that in a motion from one of you gentlemen.
I would make the motion to raise the credit card limit for the public health to seventy-five hundred. And then, on the fifteenth of June, it will come back down to its two thousand dollar limit. We're gonna raise it to seventy-five hundred, and then it'll come back down to two thousand.
Second.
All right, call for a vote on that.
Tippit, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Bulls, aye.
Okay. The news of all that's been just done, so, uh, meetings, reports.
I've got them coming up this week.
Got, uh, the historical preservation on Thursday night at seven, and then I've got a wellness meeting on Friday at ten.
If you can't catch that Thursday night, when I can catch that one for you.
I'm planning on it, but one question I had about the historical preservation, they're not listed on our website, Benton County website. Is that...
I had somebody call the other day and said it was like the wrong phone number out there, but...
I tried to find a tab for them, I didn't scan very, I just kind of was looking for it.
And they write their name changed, apparently our sign out here does not read correctly for them.
It says the, does it say society or something?
Yeah, they're not, they're not a society, but who does, who keeps, uh, who's in charge of the website?
We do that, but as far as their department, like, when we set up the new website, I don't recall if they had a tab at that time. Let me look real quick, they should be listed under our, um, appointed people, though. Yeah, you were trying to look for them under the departments?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's because they're not technically a county department.
Okay.
They are, they would be under your list of boards and commissions and that, that the supervisors appoint.
Okay.
So, that's why they don't have their own tab.
They don't have, well, that's, that's an explanation I needed, I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, last one, I had the conservation meeting, uh, okay, good news and bad news. Bad news is the sprayer truck that's out, the state's supposed to be putting the tank and all that on, just pushed back till August, delivery date.
Whoa, what happened?
So, you're gonna get no use out of that.
No.
But they are using the old stuff, they started, I believe, this week spraying, they got, either this week or last week, they got thirty-eight miles done so far in the county.
Okay. Didn't they have an engine blow up on one truck?
That's conservation now.
Oh.
Totally different, this is the weed department, conservation, yeah. They found a truck that they're interested in, but Shelby's gonna see if she's got it in her budget to get it now.
Okay.
She did not know, because this is when, between April and October is where they make all their bills.
Unless she's...
She don't know if it's in her budget yet, that she can claim it.
I haven't looked at it with her.
That truck, they use it for spraying in the parks, and then it also has there, has a snowplow mounted on it for wintertime use. The other truck was a two thousand ten, and she said the plow was older than that.
So, it's not worth putting a single engine in it?
No.
Okay. I mean, sometimes you just gotta cut and run.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I, I told her, I said, this would probably be a good time to get a bid on a snowplow so the mounts and everything would fit the new truck, there's no way they'd come off of the two thousand ten model and do a twenty twenty-five and get us a, a cost on that.
So, is this a three-quarter ton truck that they get?
They're getting, the one that had the motor problem was the one tonner.
A one tonner?
F three fifty.
Did the other get... Duals on the back?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I think so.
I think it did.
I think it did, I'm not sure, uh, but, uh, the one that they're interested in is just around a three-quarter ton.
And that would be sufficient?
Yeah.
For what they need?
What they said. So, that was one thing, uh, the tree grant, the commission last night, the board approved, the papers sent it out for planting the trees, getting bids from a company to do that this fall.
Okay.
So, that'll be in the papers.
And that's gonna, that was for watering the oak deck, wasn't it?
Yeah, for a year, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I got how many trees it's supposed to be and everything, I can't remember right away, get quoted on it. Secondary roads was down there, ooh, last week, uh, if you knew much about the roundhouse and everything, and the cement that was there, years ago, what I was told, they had like a furnace and everything, and they didn't have ductwork, of course, metal ductwork to pipe the heat from the furnace, you know, so they made concrete, culverts more or less, poured concrete in the ground, and they had the big, coming off the furnace area, and then it come to the half moon where the roundhouse was. So, it had a, oh, it starts off, it's maybe four and a half foot wide, four and a half foot deep, cement all the way around it, foot, but flush with the ground. The heat would come in there, and then it would come around this half moon, and then come out little holes in the sides of this to heat the roundhouse, the air wood. Uh, so, to me, it was a safety hazard, kids could crawl in this thing.
Oh, that didn't turn you right.
It was like a big tunnel, there was places in there where the cement itself had deteriorated, nothing but rebar showing. So, I suggested that they contact secondary roads instead of throwing this out to bids or whatever, and, uh, they come down with the excavator last week, and I guess it took them a day and a half just to smash it down.
Okay.
And then they got dirt from, I think, the city of Atkins, contractor wanted to get rid of some dirt. There we go, they hauled it in there and...
Covered it up?
Yep, so they buried that hole, so it's not a safety, so I mean...
So, it took the cement boulder for a day and a half?
Yes. So, I mean, it worked out excellent.
Yeah, well, you got saved a lot of money.
Yes. So, and I guess it is, I haven't been over there, I tried getting over this week, too busy. But anyway, uh, they said it's really greened up now, the ground is, from putting the seed down, so, I guess that's it. And I got meetings for the rest of the week for about every day, so...
Busy week, plus it's graduation season, so there's your weekends.
So, I think that's about it. I want to take a bit of expressing, so, we don't have any old business, we took care of that with, uh, waterline. Oh, Haley, over front, I haven't been up here, been by the courthouse, the chalk, the walk, did they do that?
I think it's this Thursday.
It's this week.
I think she had a little news clipping, it's gonna be this Thursday.
Okay.
You gonna come draw your name on the sidewalk?
No.
Smile your face?
No.
Hot scotch.
Okay, well, I'll take a motion to adjourn. So, moved.
Second.
All paper?
Tippit, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Bulls, aye.